All right, hello everyone. I called this meeting of the Hantram City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, March 11, 2025, and it's 6:06 PM. Would the clerk hold the rules, please?
Consulman Fai?
Present.
Consulman Musa?
Present.
Consulman Sidman?
Present.
Consulman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Consulman Al-Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Consulman Hassan?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the present meeting. Do we have any community announcements?
We do. Just want to remind everyone that the property auction has begun as of yesterday. It will go to the 31st, and then the bid openings will be on floor one. And the bids can be dropped off to clerk's office, and you can also find it posted online. Do you have...
Applications can be picked up at the CED counter, which is in mezzanine. They can pick up applications there, complete the application, put them in an envelope, drop off to clerk's office.
Perfect, thank you. That's all, Mary.
Do you want to add something?
Oh.
If I could, there's printed applications on the table outside if anyone wants them. And I apologize, Max, we have to adjust the date because city hall is closed on the 31st, so the dates are pushed back just one day. It closes Thursday.
Actually, if you don't... You want to give a quick update on the Quinder Cut stuff, or the Compo Cut stuff that you sent me?
Oh, sure.
Just give me a little quick.
We have been working with our new contractor, Progressive Companies, to come up with a community engagement strategy for the alley activation, webs of Joseph Compo between Holborn and Kenneth, and that's going to take place in two parts. At the end of this month, we're contacting a stakeholder group, the people who own property or businesses directly adjacent to the alleyway. And then the first couple weeks of April, there will be some public events, open house at the library, and a walk-through of the alleyway to look at different enhancements, like the traffic calming measures we've talked about. So those will be advertised more on the city Facebook soon. And we just sent to Max an update to council with those materials, so there'll be more coming on that soon, but want to encourage everyone to attend, in particular, the public sessions. It'd be great to get everybody...
March 19 from 5 to 6, March 26 from 5 to 6, April 3, the public open house from 5 to 7, April 7, stakeholder survey responses due, and April 9, the walking audit from 10 to 5. And all of it will be posted as well. Isabelle's office is working on translating, and actually, the chief saw most of the translations.
We're excited, thank you.
All right, no more announcements?
Yes.
Do you have one?
Yes.
Go ahead.
And I am very proud of you.
Oh, thank you.
And actually, I am here to present the mayor, Dr. Amir Malik, from the International Institute of Metropolitan Detroit.
Did that be in the public comment?
Yeah, that's not an announcement, I'm sorry. I told you I'd call you when you're ready.
Yeah, the next section would be the public comment. That's when you can do that, and make sure you...
She told one out, I already explained that to her.
I already did.
Yeah, that's what I...
That's when you say announcement, that's what I want to announce.
Thank you. So I appreciate that, and...
Correct.
With that, I think we move to the next section, proclamations, recognitions, and presentations, and we have one proclamation recognizing the observance of the holy month of Ramadan. Ramadan coming to everyone, no need to hit that. And then, do we have any additions or deletions to that agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm here. You missed me in every last council meeting. So I'd like to add the resolution for discussion about the cleanup in front of house, street, or business. And normally, after snow, we always does that, but we want to remind the residents and business owners. So resolution, as a discussion.
So you don't want to just state it as an announcement, you want to discuss it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's why it's coming, resolution, as a discussion.
There is already one in the works, the beautification commission is already planning it.
Okay, so just one, put it there.
Well, it's a motion. Is there a second?
I was saying, second.
Is there a vote on it?
All right, you can go ahead and vote on that.
Consulman Fai?
Yes.
Consulman Sidman?
Yes.
Consulman Musa?
Yes.
Consulman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Consulman Al-Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Consulman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, addition to the new... I'm sorry, new business, G, discussion regarding curb cleanup.
All right, so that would be G. All right. No more additions or deletions?
No, sir.
All right, next we move to the public...
No, I need to agenda approval and amended.
Agenda has amended.
I'd like to make a motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No.
All right. So agenda has amended, approved, and we move to the public comment section.
I have Abraham Al-Jahim, three minutes, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, city manager, city attorney, chief, and clerk. I'm here and I just want to congratulate our mayor on his new position, hopefully in January of 2025. We'll say that we hope that you stay here, we're going to miss your leadership. And what have you been, what, here almost three years? You've done a great job. The community is all together behind you, talking about Hantramic community as a whole, and we thank you for your leadership. We will miss you. The last thing I wanted is for you to leave the city, because we wanted you for two more terms, but hopefully, the next candidate will be the right person. A person with a degree, a person that lives in the city of Hantramic, a person that gives back to the community, a person with experience. And that's what I wanted to say today, but also, I want to add, if the clerk or city manager need help from the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, or the state attorney general at the honorable Dan Anassol, or even the governor to step in, this election is going to be crazy. You're going to have people to run, probably three, four candidates for mayor, maybe 10, 12 candidates for council, and I can guarantee you that have to not live in the city of Hantramic. And we have this history in Hantramic that, hey, coming for the city of Hantramic, and you get away with it. There was emails that were sent, nothing is done. People have spoken against it, nothing is done. So my... This word is to the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. For the police chief, will be a conflict of interest, because you guys hired him, he can't do nothing about it. But if you guys need help from the Wayne County, or the state, or even the federal, that doesn't mean that Trump is your friend, that he's going to protect you, no. Trump will send the FBI over here, he will send Patel if somebody's doing something illegal. So please, this election, Mr. Manager, city attorney, and clerk, take it very serious. We're sick and tired of people coming to the city, running for office that do not live in the city. We're just tired. Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you. Is it Nadat Al-Ghamouni?
Yes.
Father, three minutes.
Salaam alaikum, amma baal kari. I'm here with the good news. You have been...
A bit closer, right?
It's good.
The mayor is a success story that's signed by the University of Jordan, the Ministry of Education, and initiated by the International Institute of Metropolitan Detroit and the world in America. The International Institute, yes, they deserve that. It's a great success story, not for just Habitramic, not for Michigan, not for the United States of America. It's the world together, 123 different cultures under the International Institute, and that is what we would like to offer to you first, with the certificate of achievement, Dr. Amir.
Maybe you can come here and I'll see Belle, take a picture of that, thank you.
That is from the International Institute.
I got to take it, so...
And this is from the Ministry of Culture, the University of Jordan, and many other organization here, and you deserve it.
Thank you. Turn this way, because I was getting a glare on that side.
Just get some from him later.
There we go.
Congratulations on your position.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
I am Lynn Lazi.
Thank you for having me. By the way, I am a Nobel Peace Prize nominee.
Thank you.
Three times.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and council. I have just a couple comments about the agenda items. With Resolution 2025-25A, I am curious what the cost savings would be to change the number of precincts we have. With Resolution 2025-26, I support this grant, and I'm really excited to see development of parking and access roads, and those potholes are crazy over there by Veterans Park. I also support Resolutions 25, 29, and 30 relating to the Goodson Alley and reconstruction and the road improvements down there. That's all, thank you.
Salaam alaikum, allah huwa alaikum. Good evening, everyone. My name is Abdulaziz Jobah. I live in Hantramic for three decades or more, and I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate our honorable mayor, Dr. Balb, and I thank everyone here, city council, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, everyone here for your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comment.
Thank you. All right, we move to the consent agenda. This is approved in a single motion with no discussion, and we have approval of measures from the February 25, 2025, regular city council meeting, approval of unvoiced register date ending March 11, 2025, and C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending March 11, 2025.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No.
All right, thank you. Next is the public here. We have Resolution 2025-24, resolution finding, proposed NEZ, consistent with city goals and master plan, and adopting goal and policy statement relative to the proposed NEZ.
Motion, second.
That's to open the hearing?
6:18.
I'm sorry?
6:20.
Hello again, Mayor and council. My only concerns related to this change is it mentions that taxes will be reduced for 15 years, and knowing how even residents who purchase properties and the taxes go up, I'm just curious if there's been a thought out for one to, like, ease that tax increase back in, or if it's going to be sudden, and how that's going to be communicated to affected residents, and if they know going in what that increase is going to look like, you know, 15 years down the road, and then just making sure that all communication about this is equitable with language access to the different languages spoken in our city, and that's
Abraham, did you want to talk on the public hearing?
No.
Okay. That's all for public hearing, or for public comment during public hearings, if we can get a motion.
Motion, second.
Oh, so if you guys want to...
Any further discussion? I don't.
Okay, Consulman Hassan?
Yes.
Consulman Al-Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Consulman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Consulman Sidman?
Yes.
Consulman Musa?
Yes.
Consulman Raffai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-24 approved.
Thank you. All right, next we move to a new business. We have the first resolution, 2025-25A, approving first reading and setting the date for the public hearing and second reading of City of Hantramic Veteran Ordinance Tax Amendment to Chapter 35.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, this is proposed by our clerk. It's basically just trying to get rid of redundant staff. It's not actually changing locations, but I'll let her continue.
So we currently have seven precincts. We have one at the Hantramic Housing Commission, which is going to be untouched, okay? So that's going to always stay there, same residents will be there. We have two separate locations, three precincts at the Community Center and three precincts at Senior Plaza. In 2022, during the general election, there was a lot of votes that were... A vote that changed a lot of the election rules, and one of the election rules that changed was the minimum requirement of registered voters per precinct used to be 2,999 per precinct, but because there are so many different options of voting now, unless people at the precincts going to vote with absentee ballots and whatnot, they pushed up the number to 4,999 per precinct. So that way, it would be, like Azlin was asking, a lot less expense on the city, less machines, less employees, less testing materials, so it'll be a less reduction of the budget. So anybody who votes currently at Community Center will continue to vote at the Community Center, but instead of three separate precincts, there'll be two precincts. So you'll either go to precinct two or three, and then at the Senior Plaza, it would be four and five as opposed to five, six, and seven. I can show you the maps.
Do you have any more...
We're not adding any... Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Consulman Mahmoud, what did you want to ask me?
No, I said eliminating precinct from the...
One precinct from the Community Center and one precinct from the Senior Plaza. So Community Center is two, three, and four. We're going to take two, three, and four. Instead of having three precincts, we're going to have two precincts. Same thing with the Senior Plaza, take the three precincts, just split them into two precincts instead. So it won't be as congested, there'll be less needed equipment, and it's feasible, it works for the city.
Consolidating.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, Consulman Hassan?
Eliminating and consolidating.
Yes, consolidating, yeah. So currently...
We're good.
I'm sorry?
It's okay, go ahead.
You're good, you don't want to see this, you're saying?
Uh-huh.
Okay, no problem, you don't have to see it. Do you want to vote, or does anybody else have to...
I want that, I can see.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Here's the map as it is. As you can see, I said precinct one will not change. I'm fortunate, I don't know if I can on the laptop put two maps close to each other, but two, three, and four, you can see how they're cut off in this location right here, so two, three, and four will be... Still, the line will be right there, but instead of two and three being separated, there'll be a line going up the street right here. Same thing with five, six, and seven, instead of five, six, and seven, it'll be two separate precincts, and I will show you the new one, which will make a lot more sense because it's colored. So that's how the new precincts will be lined up, so everybody will still be in the same locations. Do you have any questions?
That's fine, thank you.
No problem.
From the survey, you make five.
Correct, yeah. So also, this is just the first reading, so the public hearing will be at the end of the month, on the 25th, and then all new identification cards will be mailed out, it'll be in the newspaper, so we'll push it out to the residents that there'll be a change in the precinct number, but like I said, no confusion, because the locations stay the same. There'll always be, there'll be somebody at the front doors, let them know which location to vote at.
All right.
Any questions? Can I vote?
Yeah, go ahead.
Consulman Hassan?
Yes.
Consulman Al-Samiri?
Yes.
Consulman Raffai?
Yes.
Consulman Musa?
Yes.
Consulman Sidman?
Yes.
Consulman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-25A approved.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 2025-26, approving award of the 2025 veteran parking lots and access road MADC grant engineering design and building.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, we have grants to do the parking lots and the road, and as always, we'll bring those in a series, but this is a rather large project, $2 million worth, and we need to get moving on it if we want to get it done this summer, and Tiffany is here to speak a little bit more on it. But it's basically the approval of all the engineering and the prep costs to get it rolling and get a bid out.
Yep, so I'm here to present and... Or the proposal for the topographic survey engineering design of the two parking lots and access road at Veterans Park. As Max stated, it'll be funded through the $2 million grant that you approved on February 25 of this year, so our plan is to be out to bid by June 15, 2025.
Good. Consulman Musa?
Yes.
Consulman Sidman?
Yes.
Consulman Al-Samiri?
Yes.
Consulman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Consulman Raffai?
Yes.
Consulman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-26 approved.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 2025-27, approving renewal of the Diligent Corporation Software Services Agreement for the 2025-26 term.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, we really didn't actually need to bring this to the council, but we wanted to do it for transparency purposes, to let everyone know what's going on. Currently, we use board docs for our council and agenda. The parent company is Diligent. Diligent is doing away with the existing board docs and going to a new format, and of course, with anything new, there's more of a cost, but it is quite a nice platform we're switching to. Rana, you have anything else to add to that?
No, it's similar to our current board docs. You just want it refreshed, because I think by the end of this month, we have to sign a contract with a new one, because they won't renew... We can't continue to be on board docs, so you'll have to learn the new system as well, and it's not that difficult. So we are doing training to sort of know the whereabouts of the website, so if you guys have any questions once it's launched, I think there's sort of like a transition. So if you have any questions, we'll be able to help you as much as we can also.
Sit here. If you don't mind, what's a different cost than the previous?
Well, the cost now is $5,000 a year, so I don't know if you recall how much board docs is, and are you sure it's even more?
It may be pretty close, but I'd have to check, but I doubt it's cheaper. Any new product is going to have a little bit more price tag, but we're kind of pigeonholed into it. It's what we're using now, it's what we're switching to, all our data is going to get migrated, just like any technology they kind of got us, so there's not too much that we can do about it. But we did preview the new platform, and it's pretty nice, so I'm not going to lie, it isn't great.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Consulman Al-Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Consulman Hassan?
Yes.
Consulman Musa?
Yes.
Consulman Raffai?
Yes.
Consulman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Consulman Sidman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-27 approved.
Thank you. The next one is Resolution 2025-28, accepting election security grant from the state of Michigan.
Motion, second.
This one is another, Rana, she actually applied for this some time ago. It's an older grant, but we're just finally bringing it to fruition. Rana, you have anything to add?
Yeah, so sometimes the state offers us like reimbursement programs and grants for the election. A lot of federal elections, they pay things for us, like employment or early voting costs. So this one in particular was an election security grant from the state of Michigan, and they gave us, I believe it was, a total of $1,500 per precinct to use for security. We bought new laptops with that, we've been using them for the past two years, it wasn't until they just... So they just paid us for that grant, so that's what the acceptance is.
Thank you.
Consulman Hassan?
Yes.
Consulman Al-Samiri?
Yes.
Consulman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Consulman Sidman?
Yes.
Consulman Musa?
Yes.
Consulman Raffai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-28 approved.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 2025-29, approval of the 2025 sewer repair modification of drainage system and alley resurface repair of the South Goodson Alley and contract extension to Dominique Gagou construction.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, I have John and Tiffany here to explain more detail, but generally speaking, this is part of the overhaul of Veterans Park. We just talked about doing the lots and the roadway in, well, this is the northern border of that park. We're also going to be redoing the drainage and adding catch basins and a whole bunch of other stuff along the way there. Tiffany and John, did I miss anything?
Nope, so there's some needed sewer repair in that area, so it's a great time to go in there, reconstruct the alley at the same time, just as to kind of do it as a package deal. So for this one, we want to extend it to the current contractor that we've been using throughout the city that has performed very well, Dominique Gagou, so...
I might add too that this one isn't grant-funded, this one is out of city resources, but the reason I say that is because the other grants we have to bid out, because they all are grant-funded. We don't have to do that specifically on this one, that's why we can extend the current contractor, which also speeds up the process, and frankly, Dominique Gagou has been doing a really good job with the alleys. So in order to make everything come together cohesively in Veterans Park this summer with all the stuff we got going on, including finally the bathroom renovations, we're trying to time it all just precisely, so...
Mr. Mayor, how much is this renovating at?
525.
It is out of sewer, it's not a general fund, it's just not a grant fund. It's not a general fund burden.
Sit here. Just clarify, so that's the South Goodson, that's behind the Amman Cafe, correct?
That is correct. It's the one that runs the border, the northern border of Veterans Park all the way back. It's going to be actually a significant upgrade for the park as well. The community is going to notice the difference, it's going to open it up, it's going to make it look a lot more beautiful.
Now, we went to the town line, just start working.
So our plan on this one is to... I think you said we were going to try and start a construction date of July 15 approximately.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Major renovations in the park this summer.
Is it the same company as is doing the rest of the alleys?
Yes.
So he's the one that's been doing the alleys recently, so the alleys that were done in '23 and '24 are Dominique's.
Well, the ones that were... The next phase that we're doing.
So those we have to bid out, because that's under that $1.5 million grant, so we have the nine alleys currently being surveyed right now, so that'll move into design, then I do have to put those out to bid, because they are under a grant.
He may get them, I'm sure if they...
He's aware of them, and I'll make sure to send him the invitation to bid as soon as we post it, so he's aware and he can bid on that, and I know he's interested in it, but we can't just award, because it's under grant funds, we can't just award the contract to a contractor. We have to...
Well, I know that. The reason I'm asking you, because if he's going to do this job, that means how long it will take for him to finish the rest of the night. We don't want to, you know, wait until the winter, that's my point.
If he got the bid, he got the time.
Yeah, he'll understand that, so he's aware.
If we time it properly, I mean, we might already have him here moving into it, you know, so I mean, we're trying to get everything going.
We're doing two more alleys not far from it, so... I'm just hoping that we're able to do all the nine that we have in this phase for the winter, that's it.
I'm sure that's the plan.
That's our plan, yep. So we're currently surveying, like I said, and design is up next, and I think we planned on getting those up to bid. I don't remember the exact date I said, so I want to say that until April, but don't pull me on that.
All right. Let's get to the vote.
Consulman Musa?
Yes.
Consulman Al-Samiri?
Yes.
Consulman Raffai?
Yes.
Consulman Hassan?
Yes.
Consulman Sidman?
Yes.
Consulman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-29 approved.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 2025-29, approving award of the 2025 South Goodson Alley... Next is Resolution 2025-G, approving award of the 2025 South Gutsen Alley East of Joseph Campo to Veteran Park Engineering Design.
Motion.
Second.
This is the companion resolution, the one we just spoke on, for Hennessy to give a little on.
Can we vote on that?
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-30 approved.
Thank you. Then the added resolution for discussion, G, which is discussion, discussing the cleanup of the curbs in, in front of the storefronts.
Of course.
Second.
All right.
Mr. Chair. Actually, this is very good idea. Normally, Councilman Sumari and Councilman Naim, and with other volunteers together, they used to go as a group, as a volunteer invite, and, and like a different, clean the different section. And that is the good thing. First of all, we like to request to the owner in the house or business, they should do themselves. And the, and the curb and other thing, any volunteer, any organization, anybody personally, just take the step ahead, gathering the people, the clean, and that's the good idea. That's why we brought it, to remind everybody, after snow is happened normally, snow time, everybody throw here, there. When snow go in the shore, so that's why, that's a good idea. I think Councilman Sumari also called me this morning, I forget. So myself, I tried to do one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to find out, what's the city plan for sweeping this street? When other guys starting to walk cleanup?
That actually, that's in the plans right now, I don't actually have details. Isabel, do you have any more to add to that beautification commission?
I think we don't do a good job in the walk cleanup. Many streets was bleeding and everything all over.
I can't speak to street sweeping, but the beautification commission is part of the city ordinance, is charged with organizing annual cleanup. So they're planning one to coincide in April, so usually it occurs. Sometimes we don't have snow that is all melted, so April's still their target date. And of course, more than one annual cleanup is definitely something I need, so. We'll have announcement and information about that very soon.
Yeah, as far as the street sweepers are concerned, we, we don't run them in the winter, for obvious reasons, they do have water in them, so.
Definitely not in the winter.
Yeah, as, as it starts to warm up, you'll start seeing the sweepers out and out again.
It don't have to be which month, as soon as you see the warm, and if city have everything ready, if city have employee, they can go and, you know, run around and sweep and come back.
I've, I've already been urging them to get moving, I think, and planning. It's, it's already all happening behind the scenes.
That's why we buy the equipment.
Councilman Musa?
I like to know, some people also, city generals want to know. We have a tree trimming, or dead tree gonna remove, or some of the bad tree also, do you have any plan for the resident?
Yeah, also, Rana, Councilman, I mean, they, we put them on the list, and then when the company fires up and starts getting out there, they start checking them off the list. But I mean, if you have complaints, as always, bring them to us, we'll, we'll put them on the list, but.
I put twice last season, don't touch of the streets.
It's possible sometimes, Councilmen, they do come out and they, they trim them. We're actually, who we're using now is an actual certified arborist. So a lot of times, they'll come out there and say, hey, this tree's healthy, even though the resident may just want it gone. So they trim it a little, and then they leave, and the resident's like, why is our tree still here? So we get a lot of that. If you want to give me the address of which ones they are, I'll, I'll definitely chat.
Not cutting the branch, come very down.
Okay, well, after the meeting, give me the address on that one, and I'll give you the answer tomorrow.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman. I got a, I got a question. City, they got a lot of trash. We mentioned for that one many, many years, a lot of trash. Why they don't make, the city are code enforcement, when they have a lot of trash, bring a layer from the business people in the house? This is a layer. They have a trash, close his house, close the business. I see the trash all over the city. We just wait for the people to mention they have a lot of trash. How many people, we ask the police, can stay a little bit, close the business people? People they take, drinking something, they throw out. Wouldn't catch anyone. So we mentioned for that one many years. I need one, one time, catch one person, and they got a thousand people. They throw out in the street. If they go to a restaurant, if they go to supermarket, they see the parking lot, they see the street, a lot of trash. How long they gonna clean that one?
So are you talking about holding the businesses accountable?
Count of the business, the business, and the resident to street.
So code is actively out there dealing with residents and businesses, their property specifically. I mean, we're doing that every day. In fact, I just had one yesterday, of, of commercial property, if someone reached out to me in regards to needing a little bit of time to get it cleaned. So I mean, I know that's happening every day. Are you talking about just general people littering too, or the PD?
People, you know, people they throw out, they throw out in the street. Do you drive around in the city? You drive around?
Absolutely.
You don't see any trash in the street?
I see things that need to be addressed, addressed all over the place, that I, I frequently have our code address. But frankly, there's, there's a lot of areas. This is why our code is so diligent in issuing so many warnings and violations. But quite frequently, as quickly as we issue them, as quickly as people complain that we do issue them. So I mean, it's kind of a double edged sword. So I mean, if you have some specific areas you want us to focus on, we're happy to do it. But we are constantly, constantly issuing warnings and tickets out for just that, every, every day. But if there's a specific area, I, I know of some troubling businesses specifically that we've had to deal with over and over, several on Campo that have had tickets. And I've also had Councilmen advocate for them as well, after we've issued them.
Campo, and Conan, and Kinif, and Holbrook, and the whole of the city. They got a lot of trash. When they go blow air, you see the trash in the, the blowout. Trash.
I personally went in to.
Trash is not a dirt, dirt, they blow out. And they got a lot of trash, for the whole of the city.
To one of the hookah places and asked them numerous times personally to clean up around their business.
Well, I think, I think we should suggest that every business is responsible to clean up in front of their store. You know, even this, you know, not just the sidewalk, even the curb, you know, beyond the curb. So every day, we should send a letter, you know, to educate those business owners that the code enforcement would be passing it every day at so-and-so time. And if this area is not clean, you will be issued a ticket. So that way, every day, they will look clean in front of their stores and make sure that everything is okay. Because some of the businesses are really negligent, you can't, they, you know, it's horrible how you see in front of their store the whole day, and they don't take care of it. So same thing for the residents, you know, if there's a minor thing, that's okay. But if there's a lot of trash, they should be issued, not just a warning, but a violation as, as well. I think we should make that, you know, just like a, you know, one of our codes, like, you know. We should discuss this in another.
We do it, Mayor, 100%, and we, we find that it's a lot of the same offenders getting tickets over, over and over. I, like I was telling Councilman Samiri, I personally went in to some of these businesses and said, hey, why don't you get one of your employees to routinely come out here a couple times a day? Because you know it's your, your patrons throwing it there, and as a business owner, you're responsible for this. And we've also cited them. It's just a constant thing. I don't know why the business owners don't care that much, because some, a lot of them don't. And we absolutely are citing them. But if there's a couple that come to mind specifically, I'm happy to pay them a visit, even personally. And if they don't listen, we'll cite them again. But a lot of the ones that will come to mind, I promise you, we have done.
I do have one, I have, there's a resident who has, I mean, probably a lot of people will recognize it, but who has a bunch of trash on his property and all over his property. And recently, I got the judge to rule, basically, he has nine days, nine days are almost up to clean it up, or else he goes to jail for 90 days. So I'm hoping he cleans it up before the.
Have to, have to, they just wait for many organizations come from outside to help the city to clean out.
Well, I think if we prioritize these things and, you know, stay away from spending so much time discussing non-relevant issues, you know, and, and, you know, that has to do with each other, we could, you know, come up with some regulations, and we could focus on these priorities for the residents. And I think this is a good step, you know, that this is a good start that Councilman Hassan, you know, brought, that we should discuss these issues that, that concern the residents. And we should come up with, you know, some resolutions or instructions to the code enforcement and, and go from there.
So a couple come to mind, and they're corporations, so I'm gonna, I don't care if I throw them under the bus, but CVS is a constant offender with their parking lot. I cannot tell you how many times a year we go there and look for someone in there to cite, literally. Where we find ourselves citing the managers, sending them to the corporate officials, same with the Dollar Store over there. It's, it's redundant, it's literally over and over and over, and we keep citing them. So, but I don't know if it just gets lost in the mix on their end, but it seems to, it seems to work for a moment when we cite one of their managers, and then all of a sudden, they run out there and clean it. But it's almost like, you know, they get a new manager every couple of months, and you gotta redo it.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
To the mayor, as he stated that, why not send a letter? And having, you can design a photo, or 3D shows where they're supposed to clean up, like he mentioned, the curbs, where in the car park, where there's a lot of trash over there. So I think sending a letter to these businesses with, with the water bill, or we can have one of our employees go there and just pass them out, and we'll show details where they're supposed to be cleaning in front of their businesses.
Councilman, we are so far beyond that, we've done that so many times, it's, it's ad nauseam at this point. They, they know better, we're to the point where we just ticket them, because they, they know what they're supposed to do. I personally went into some of these, as the city manager had told them, a lot of them just don't care, it's over and over. Just like I said, CVS, you know, they'll have a manager, and then they get a new manager. It's, it's just like, we've wasted so much of city resources over and over and over. They should know at this point, just clean up your mess. All the city businesses should take ownership of their property, whether they think it's theirs or not. I mean, we do have some residents, I mean, the mayor just awarded one of our residents for walking around the community, cleaning up stuff. Everyone should have that mentality, especially all our business owners, 100%. Because we, we shouldn't, as a city, have to remind business owners every couple of months with a letter. I, I mean, they should know this, they're all adults, they own business, they're making money here, they should just clean up on their own.
But it's not gonna hurt sending one letter showing where they're supposed to be cleaning. Because a lot of businesses don't know they're supposed to clean up on the curb.
We, we.
We get a sidewalk, you know, sidewalk, but at least sending a letter, and then when you assign, you know, send, give them a ticket, and then give us a call, well, it is what it is, they send you a warning, they send you a letter, you're supposed to clean around your business. It is, it is what it is. It is, yeah.
We, we certainly, yeah.
A lot of people don't know that. Three feet, and the. But people don't know that. All property owners have to clean three feet into the street.
Yep.
And there you go. And I guarantee you, a lot of businesses here don't even know that. And that's, send that letter.
Absolutely.
And, and, and details, show the where they're supposed to be cleaning up, and then we go from there. At least we have sent details of how to clean up, so they don't have no excuses if they get citation. All right.
Mr. Chair. Small thing. So we need a couple of example, if anybody, like, take the coffee and bag, coming out and throwing the, in the parking lot in the street, if any code enforcement, any police officer see, if we can make one or two ticket, it is a state law, not even city. And it's example and go through everybody, then people not gonna do it again. So right now, people doing that, like a hookah shop.
So literally?
And just, just doing that. If, if police see, or any code enforcement see, and one or two like ticket, and all set.
And then also, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, and then also, in some areas, I think the city needs to place a garbage can. And there, and, and, you know, Joseph Campo, I think there's places that the city should install garbage cans in some of these areas.
We can certainly add more. I mean, if, if council thinks of a good spot where you think we might need one, we are not opposed to adding them. We, we have quite a few of them, and we're happy to put more.
Oh, and then send the code enforcement or one of the, you know, the department and see which areas that there's a lot of trash and to put some. Why you have to have, have council member do that?
I was just looking for a suggestion, if you have one. But we're, we're happy to do it, we, we can add more.
Mr. Mayor. Especially example, I saw so many times, in front of Aladin, those garbage can full, it overflows. So if they're not full, what they gonna do, they gonna pick it up?
I think it, like, I think they're on schedule three or, at least three, maybe four times a week, they're emptied. That's, that's a lot, and they get filled very fast.
No.
I know, and I can add to that. What's with the can, with the garbage cans? The problem is that we're trying to enforce it to the rental division. We have property owners there that are not buying, paying for a dumpster. And they're telling their tenants to get rid of your own trash. So they're supposed to have a receptacle. So I'm telling my rental inspectors, make sure that we can verify that there's trash. What they're doing, literally, is everybody from the apartments is gonna down and they're filling up the city garbage cans. Right after they get filled, within 10 minutes, they're full. And we spend a lot of hours every day during the summer emptying these cans. And it's not from just the passives that want to throw out a bubble gum wrapper, it's from the tenants. So that's where I'm really trying to crack down on the problem first, that's where the biggest problem.
We have identified a few over the years, I mean, we've caught them, basically, and shut down that and a few of them, but there's still more doing it, it's just a matter of catching them.
John, I tell the Aladin owner, if it is full, city don't come. It's your responsibility also, as a business owner, to change it and, and take it to the, your big one. So they're also doing that. So like you say apartment, that owner, tell them, if, if I catch you, you will be in the big time ticket, but it is part of your responsibility, you people putting there, so you can do it, I'm sitting out here. It's all our own responsibility.
We, we really appreciate that, because that is a business owner's responsibility for their area, exactly what their responsibility is.
And your customer is putting there.
You know, I, I mean, we, even though we empty them frequently, you know, I mean, we can't see everything. I mean, your city staff is busy throughout the day going around, so. And it also helps too, we have no problem if a business owner calls us, says, hey, this one's full, you know, I'll get on the horn with, with priorities, saying, I know it's not your day, but run through there and grab it. And they usually do. But yeah, that's very refreshing to hear that a lady's doing that.
And also, some of the, the garbage don't have the bins in them, the rubber, so it's straight to the metal. Then it's to be added, some of them.
We, we, I'll, I'll actually remind DPW to go through and check them, but you'd be surprised.
I bought 50 of them and replaced most of them.
Yeah, that's like a constant thing for some reason. I don't know, I don't know if people are grabbing them and using them in their house, but we, we keep replacing them.
I'm sure.
Yeah, we bought 50 of them and just put them.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's an outpourers discussion. There is no voting, so we are done.
It's a constant war of garbage layers.
Well, I think with this, we come to the end of the new business, and we move through the reports. It will start with my report. I don't have much to say, but I just wanna thank everyone for coming today. And Ramadan Kareem to those who fast. I just wanna mention that, you know, there's a lot of talk recently about my appointment with the, as an ambassador to Kuwait. I just wanna clarify, because the news has been reaching out to me, asking for details, but not sure if I'm allowed to talk about my new rule at this point, because I haven't, you know, it has to be confirmed by the Senate first, which I hope it will be. I think I will have a hearing or so, it's coming, it's, it hasn't been scheduled, but I think I'm ready for everything. So the, up until I announced running for the mayor, which is the same day when the president called me, after I posted my announcement, the position that was on the table for me was Senior Advisor for Arab and Muslim Americans Affairs, which I requested. And for two months, I was working on that. I was offered an ambassadorship and Deputy Secretary for State, but I put them on the side. So, because this is the only. So, because this is the only position that I could do, going back and forth to the White House, and serving, continue to serve as the mayor. After that, in a week, when they started talking to me about the details of the position, I found out that it's overwhelming. I'll be the point of contact for all the people in the United States. Already have, you know, enough burden on my shoulders here. I only have a few hours to spend with my family. So if I become the point of contact for all the Arab and Muslim organizations and institutions in the United States, just imagine how overwhelming it will be. So from that point, I started reconsidering that position. Of course, the president told the team, accommodate the mayor for whatever he wants. So I had everything, you know, you can't miss this opportunity when you have given the options to choose. So I did a lot of research, and I just decided to keep myself away from all the controversies and all the hard work also. You know, secret, WT Secretary of State requires you to be there five days a week, which means you can't serve as the mayor at the same time while taking this position. So there are a lot of discussion with the family and friends and advisors. I decided to just go with the ambassadorship. But that was after two weeks of the president's call. So it was not planned that I changed my mind, because for two months I was negotiating for senior advisor. So, and that's what happened. I know some people got disappointed that I may not be able to run for the mayor. Or, so I apologize for the inconvenience for a lot of people. Some people wanted to run, but they can't anymore, it wasn't planned. It just happened that, two weeks after the call of the president, I reached out, I made my mind, and made my final decision. And out of many options they gave me for multiple countries, I just chose Kuwait, peaceful country, away from the trouble. I mean, I think, I think it was the best option that I made after consulting a lot of my friends and advisors and family. And so, at this point, it's gonna be a new, a new chapter in my journey. I think it would be exciting, hoping that I'll be confirmed by the Senate. And I'm ready for the next chapter in my life, which at this point, I think I will not be able to run again for the mayor. Unless I'm not confirmed by the Senate, I'll come back. We still have a month and a half, so if they don't confirm me, I'll come back and register to run again.
Mr. Mayor, may I have one question for you?
Go ahead.
So let's say April twenty seventh, you still did not get the Senate confirmation. And that is the last day.
What is, are you asking you?
No, he's asking me.
So last day.
Last day. October twenty seventh.
What is the date? Twenty first, twenty second.
Yeah, well, I'm hoping from now until then that I should have the hearing.
If you lost the hypothetical, you didn't get it, then you're gonna still register to run the mayor?
That's gonna be risky, it's a good question, because...
So then you clear people, I'm not running. That's a good idea.
Yeah, well, if until the deadline, nothing happened, I will just make it my decision, you know, whether to run or not. I would make it clear. Because at this point, I mean, I'm being told that if the boss won't say it's gonna go through, I mean, as long as they have no violations and felonies and stuff, which I don't. I submitted all my paperwork and everything was okay, hoping that everything would be fine. So let's see over the next few weeks what's gonna happen. Just hoping that it will work out, and I can see a lot of people running already, deciding to run for the mayor position or for city council. I think it's gonna be an interesting election, like you said. There's a lot of people who are interested in the mayor position and the city council. I heard even that some females are running this time from some Bengali community, which is interesting. I think we should encourage that, and we should have, you know, fair representation for the whole community. And we should make this council as diverse as possible. And so, at this point, I wanna, you know, I'm still gonna be here, of course, running the next meetings until, until I leave the country. So, so thank you so much. I wanna thank this opportunity, thank Hamtramck residents for their support. It was an interesting journey. I think we put Hamtramck on the map, a lot of things that we consider positive. Some people may consider it negative, but that's how politics is. And we think that Hamtramck, this 2.1 square mile that nobody knew about is now, you know, on the international news and the national news. And I hope that our community will continue to make it vibrant and influential community and attract politicians in all the elections. We have governor election, senate election coming. And then, you know, from now on, we, we hope that we continue to work with each other despite our political differences. It's okay to disagree with each other, but we have to prioritize serving our community and respect each other, learn from our differences. I mean, there's a lot of negative media out there, you know, some biased articles written just because they disagree with me about something. So it's unprofessional, it's a shame, you know, very, very biased articles. You could tell when you read them, that they are, the only thing missed is, or they think, the only thing left is cussing me out in those articles, which is not professional. And, but I wanna send this message to those people, you know, radical media. I think what happened in the past, pressuring our community to shift to the other side is something made by disrespecting, the disrespectful to our community and to our choices, and not respecting our, you know, political views when we disagree with each other. So to change that to a war, waiting against us, is just, it just means that you have not learned from your mistakes in the past, and you're gonna pay the price again in the future. I think what happened, you know, the shift in the presidential election was a response to this kind of behavior by some politicians and by the media, radical media. And if you keep, if you keep behaving the same way, then you're only gonna cause our community to be, to keep shifting away from you. So if you don't wanna fix your mistakes that you have committed in the past by treating our community with respect and respect our choices, then that means you haven't learned your lesson, and the future will hide a lot of surprises for you. And you're gonna keep paying the prices. I, as a person, it's okay, I can take a lot of pressure and unstoppable. The more you push, the more I resist. So if you haven't learned that from the last three years, then you're gonna continue to make mistakes. And I have a lot of patience, I don't give up easily. And I think our legacy in this, in this city will continue, because the community have learned a lot. Our community has learned a lot from this experience that we went through. I'm just disappointed by the radical media, because they, they are very, very biased and unprofessional. And this will just make us very resilient to continue. You can shake your head, that's okay. But that's a message to them, because I'm not, I don't have time to respond to every media. But this is, I think our community will decide in the next election as well, and I think our legacy will continue in this city. Thank you, with that, I end my report. Next, do you want to introduce the mayor, Protem, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanna thank everybody for coming here tonight. And also, from the bottom of my heart, I wanna congratulate you on your fame by the President as ambassador of Kuwait. I wish it was in Kuwait, I wish it was in Saudi. You could have helped me with my wife's case, maybe, you know, faster process. But I wish you all the best, we will miss you. I was, you know, thinking about, you know, working again as a team in the campaign.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, you have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Next, any council report?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
First, like to say congratulations, and you did very good job. And thank you, even though I was against the Donald Trump. He did the right things. He didn't forget Hamtramck, he did not forget you, and that's the good thing. He kept his word. So, good luck. I, Mr. Mayor Protem, was saying the Saudi area, you missed the first phone call, remember? You had opportunity to go there, and you can, you can see the, the modern dance club also in Saudi Arabia. You missed that. Part of, I have to say, reference to your couple of thing. Those people thirty years doing against me anyway, they're thinking, I educate the people. For me, they're not here. It's not, it's the change of the demographic and the population, they have to understand, they are not educated enough to understand the democracy. Every year, twelve or thirteen application in Michigan State against me. Why, why, why? What they do, and wouldn't do against them, little mistake or little this, little that. No, those people are the those people. The hate, that will be the hate. That's why sometimes, some uneducated, Facebook-educated people don't know this, don't know that. Even they don't know who are you, who are I am. Sometimes you're very gentle, I'm not gentle. I said, stop it, you cannot be my servant, some of the point. Okay, those kinds of thing, if you don't say, those people, all day long, all day long, nothing to do. Today I'm going to work, I saw the Facebook against me, for what reason? Okay, so I'm not worried those people, because they cannot do no, nothing. We are, we've been proven sixteen years, right here, and I can come two more times, and I can change the, the law. I made it, I can bring the boat, I can change it too. So the people who are in talking to the Facebook, not knowing nothing, undereducated, showing yourself, be careful, you can go get the lawsuit too. What you're talking, if it is not correct, if you cannot prove, you will be sued for it. But I'm not going for, I'm not worried about piece of shit, my garbage, my servant, I'm not worried those people. I have to do, I have one master degree and one bachelor degree, both of them, so I don't have to worry about those people. But if anybody wanna come to see face to face, after city hall, after council meeting, come, and I will show you who I am. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. So thank you to the audience from Dan Karim who were fasting, and thank you, best of luck to you. I hope your diplomacy go around your boundary and bring peace to the Middle East, and wish you all the success and everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Moser, go ahead.
Good evening, thank you we will be here this evening. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to express my warmest congratulations for you. And I remember from the journey of, we talked with you, it is excellent. You made the right decision about the last presidential election. And I'm great and grateful that you take me with your journey from the beginning. I was with you two walking together, especially with Warren, when Trump came in the rally. We, on your, on your hard working, we bring Trump to the, our small city Hamtramck. And finally, with you, we go to the integration, three money. It's a wonderful moment in time we spent with you, in your experience, your Saba community, with honesty, integrity, and the best of your knowledge. I'm proud of, with your journey, shared your journey, and learned some, a lot of things from you and the community. We really, really miss you, and we love you. I wish you, your journey goes much, much further. Make you the example for our community, and make your staff the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, you wanna go, Councilman?
Thank you for everyone coming today. Ramadan Kareem for the people fasting. I want the mayor, Amir Galib, Mr. Amir Galib, congratulations.
Thank you.
I know the city is gonna miss you. Make the city beautiful, and make the city go up. Thank you, the tour of that.
Thank you.
And thank you for everyone.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Go ahead, Councilman Sadman.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for coming. Ramadan Kareem, and we want to congratulate our honorable mayor for his new position. We hope through your diplomatic skill and negotiation and communication, you can bring peace to the Middle East and people for listening too. Thank you, thanks for having, have a good night.
Thank you, thank you. And with that, I just wanna share also that President Trump just announced also appointing another Arab American person to be the ambassador in Tunisia. That's Mayor Bezzi of Saint-Eye. And so that's historic, three ambassadors of Arab Americans for the first time in history in the US administration. And maybe there's more to come. And there is a senior advisor who's Arab American, that's historic, never happened in the history of the US. So with that, I wanna also congratulate my friend Mayor Bezzi. He was very supportive during the presidential election, and good luck in Tunisia. So, thank you, everyone, and Ramadan Kareem again. And we move back to the public conference.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Abraham, Kim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you gave President Trump the Arab American and the Muslim American vote, and he knows that. And I'm glad he delivered. What called my attention is, when you guys were talking about the trash and stuff, when the city gives tickets, Max said, some council members come back and try to help those businesses, basically to cancel the tickets, maybe. If you guys spend more time on working for the city instead of working against each other, we would be in a better place right now regarding the issues that's going on. And giving the tickets, like you see, giving citations, Max, and the city giving citation, start with two hundred, three hundred, five hundred, a thousand, two thousand. And I bet you any money, they would do it themselves. So I think you guys should raise the amount of the tickets to hire, and have the businesses responsible, all the way from Hamtramck Drive to Carpenter, and from Buffalo to Dequender. Thank you.
Thank you. Len Blazey?
Hello, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to acknowledge, related to the trash discussion, that Hamtown Trash Use is a volunteer group across Hamtramck that does regular cleanups. And during the punch keep run this year, we cleaned up, I know, I personally, me and my boyfriend cleaned up over one and a half contractor bags full of trash just from Pullman Street. And so I wanted to acknowledge that, and the leadership, Max Go-Ginnis, who also works in the CEB office, organizes a lot of cleanups, even separate from beautification and other initiatives. So I wanted to acknowledge Max, but then I also wanted to remind all of you of part of your role as public servants, that it's important to know the ordinances. And part of our, our job as active community residents is to communicate what those rules are with our residents, with our business owners, through relationship building. And that's a lot more effective than throwing tickets at people. And I know this is always a sticky situation. People say we need to issue more tickets, but then we have empathy for people who get tickets, and it's a back and forth, and so there needs to be a happy balance there. And I think the role of our elected officials is really to help communicate the rules of this city out to residents and business owners. I would also like to congratulate you, Mayor. And I'd like to also thank you for your explanation of kind of, you know, your thought process and how you determined to choose to go to Kuwait. And I wish you the best in the Senate. And I wish you the best in the Senate hearing and what comes next with that. And also Ramadan. Move back to everybody.
Good evening, sir.
I have a... Any...
Salim Datih?
You can stay for five, ten minutes. You can stay for five, ten minutes. I appreciate it. Just asking, congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
On your new robe. You made us proud. We miss you, City Council. The reason I'm here today is the fact that our, one of our elected official, Mr. Hassan, do not know how to take public criticism. He made a post on Facebook about a potential candidate for mayor and I decided to post my feedback, the feedback. I called it a clown, clown show. That's just the feedback. He did not like the feedback. So he made a comment on my post. He said, "Ludhi, I know who you are." He made that comment. My profile is a public page. It has my picture on the profile.
As that's all.
Yeah, okay. So that means I was not hiding behind the screen and making the comment. So that comment is a direct threat toward me. Okay.
He just admitted it. He said, "direct threat."
No.
Just put on the record.
Yeah, yeah, go on.
Okay. Also, I replied to his comment, says, "Ludhi, I know who you are." I said, "Okay, I have a picture on the profile. My name is there, full name is there." Mr. Abu Musa, Mr. Muhammed knows me personally. And he replied, "I'm not gonna hire you as my servant." He replied that to me. And at the end, he said, "Go work at a gas station." So I've told his comment. I probably sent an email. I don't know if you saw that email or not. I sent it to Khalil, brother Khalil. This is very unprofessional, just a feedback. You guys are public officials. You guys are, you guys should be able to take negative other feedback. I mean, I agree with everything, but I can make comments. You can also respond to my comments professionally.
As my servant. Agreed. Because you don't have your shit.
You are servant. You are servant. You know, people voting for you.
You have read online, YouTube. Everything is being recorded. If you wanna file a lawsuit, I'll give you my address personally.
Oh, just to...
Hold on, I'm sorry. You're all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just a moment. Is it Abdul... Abul... Abul A?
Abil A.
Abil? All right, two minutes.
All right. So just to add on to that, you made, you know, go work at a gas station. As you know, a lot of people voted for you. In this city, works at a gas station. You look down, you look down on it. You're like, it's something you're above, all of a sudden. This is America, just FYI. Everybody has a color for twenty. You're not above anybody. You're not above the law. You're not the thing. You're an elected official. People who elected you to this council and you're looking down on them. Lot of residents of this city order a gas station.
Tell them to look at it, Mayor.
Order a gas station, also, they own gas stations. And you're like, oh, boy, it's like a joke to you. Another thing is, you said previously...
You'll have to speak to the mayor.
Yeah. So another thing you mentioned there, unqualified unprofessionals. You just proven yourself who is unqualified here and who is a professional. You're running a circus show. It's absolute circus. We, every, if every meeting, you're doing a circus, running a clown show here. Another reason is...
Excuse me. You can not say clown show here. See, he's a servant.
See?
Yes.
Sure you are.
Yeah. So another, another thing I would like to, I would like to add to this is that on behalf of these residents of Hamtarami, based on your behavior, I would suggest you resigning from the position. We're called for resignation.
Let me get pressure, let me get...
You cannot go there. Go back there. It's not now. Excuse me. He cannot sit back there.
Continue. Sorry, yeah. That's all I like to think, you know. Another, another reason is, you say you have bachelors and everything. Do you think every people who talks on Facebook and everything, they do not have a bachelor's degree or a master's degree? You're the only one who's educated here? No, sir. You're wrong. So based on my, to conclude this, based on your behavior and your professionalism in a publicly held position, we would like to recommend you resigning from your current councilman position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope. Thank you. Okay. Imam Arif Hasr?
Salaam alaikum, Ramadan ala barakat. Good evening to all of you. Your congratulations on your appointment. And I'm so appreciative to President Trump for having good faith in you, as Hamtarami does, to install you as our ambassador for Kuwait. Thank you for all you have done in Hamtarami. And as you are happy, I'm happy for you for first Hamtarami son to be ambassador for some international country out in the United States. This is, this means a lot for all of us. And Hamtarami has been here before us and Hamtarami will remain. And I hope you will continue to work with your colleagues to make Hamtarami better. Brothers and sisters, you're talking about the return of Hamtarami. As you know, it is time. I appreciate you for that. Hopefully, you take appropriate things to fix it. I'm founder and president of two inter-federalization, Commonwealth Alliance for Inter-federalization and Ministry of Justice and Safety. We organize IFtar on March 2nd, Thursday at 6:00 p.m. at Michigan State University in Detroit. The address is 3408 Detroit Mission 4A, 2B, 01. So all of you invited, come by. So thank you. I'm thankful to our manager, Max Carverino, for his great leadership. Whenever I come to any department, everybody doing great job, everybody happy. Thank you, Kassman Faiy, for your input in our neighborhood, for your great job. I appreciate you all taking with for, they meet me for Italian TV reporters, talking to them. I appreciate you all for hard work. Continue, keep up. Chief, thank you for your good job in your police department.
Abdul Aziz Goba.
There's Abdul Aziz and Abdul...
There's two.
Abdul Aziz Goba.
Thank you. Thank you for having me again. I guess I wanna put on the trash stuff in Cleveland, Alabama city. The city is always our face as a community. And I have experience from my own business in different states that sometimes, and especially in Tennessee, when you issue a license for business, they give you a paper list that what you have to do and what you are responsible for. For example, you have to be responsible for cleaning up, for making the building looks good, all that kind of stuff. And I recommend the city to do that. I come to the city and issue a new business license and it's only one paper to hand it to the owner of the business. And who will be responsible for it? Sometime you have to sign for that paper. That's one thing. Another thing is to ticket people just right away. I don't think is a fear for either resident or commercial. Have to have some kind of education for the city, you know, resident or who doing business in the city before you ticket them or banish them. Thank you.
We made a resolution to give warning before the ticket. So the first violation is a warning always. Whatever, if it's repeated multiple times, then no. But yeah.
Thank you.
Abdul Dagdan?
Abdul Lattif, yes. Good evening, everyone. And happy Ramadan and happy Easter. I would like to take the moment to congratulate our mayor for the new position and I wish you the best luck in this new role. And I also would like to thank our city manager, council members, all of the other city staff for the good work that they have been providing to the community. So I really thank you, everybody, and wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ahmed Shara?
Yeah, thank you. I came late. So the city is very important to me. I'm not gonna waste the time. That's why I brought my children. So we were at the doctor office. That's not the personal thing. But I love this city. I'm here to congratulate Dr. Amir and I wish you the best. And I knew you're gonna cross the country. We all proud of this and I know for sure you're gonna make the change because that's your professional. And I know your choice to be Kuwait, to defend our rights, everybody rights. That's once. And after you go, I wish from everybody, thanking our attorney, Mr. Max. We're not gonna forget our city clerk, the beautiful chief, as she's calling him all the time. Yeah, well, she says so. I think he got offended when he called him beautiful. Yes, he is. See, a beauty, if you see the chief going out. Okay, I'm gonna tell you what I mean by the beauty.
Too bad I can't get the camera to come in.
The beauty thing, the other day, he was in the cold with his son. Secure the city, stay there. You know how sober and how that means indeed to people? Beauty that when he going at night, checking everybody out of his schedule. The beauty, when people always, you know, may complain about him and he smile and attend every event out of his schedule as in a police officer. That's my beauty. 30 seconds, that's gonna be enough. Thank you. Another thing, I hope the election coming up gonna stay out of the Facebook battle. Please, and Mr. Chief, I want you to be more strict with people try to misbehave. Thank you very much. Shukran lakwa, lizakallah khair ala kulli shay'ah amal to'la city. A last thing that I want to announce. Everything was happening here. I swear together in Ramadan, it wasn't personal. I want the city to stay beauty. Shukran lakwa. Lizzamullah khair. Thank you.
It's all for public count.
Mr. Chief, I think it's the way you brushing your hair.
Oh, you have to kneel.
Well, thank you, guys. With that, we come to the end of our meeting and we move to a adjournance.
A motion.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
7/27.
John, can you give me the remote, please? Sure. Give it back. It's a good pen. No, it's gonna smear right on the back. It's gonna smear. Oh, it's all shiny.